I'm going to call the city council meeting for June the 3rd, 2014 to order. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Tannett.
Here.
Schottmeyer.
Here.
Adams.
Here.
Long.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Marsh.
Here.
Kenyon.
Here.
Petty.
Mayor Jordan.
Here. Would you join in resigning and pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First tonight, I would like to recognize Shay Hoppers Woodland Junior High Government Class. If you all would stand to be recognized tonight. Yes. Welcome. Okay, the first thing that we have tonight is consent agenda. Number one, approval of the May 20th, 2014 city council meeting minutes. Number two, Evans Construction and Remodeling LLC, a resolution to authorize contract with Evans Construction and Remodeling LLC in the amount of $24,900 for community development block grant rehabilitation of ineligible residents located at 505 West Mountain Street. Number three, bid number 14-24 Lewis Ford Sales Incorporated, resolution to award bid number 14-24 to Lewis Ford Sales Incorporated of Fayetteville, Arkansas for the purchase of a 2015 Ford F-550 pickup truck with reading utility body in the amount of $44,276 for use by the Water and Sewer Operations Division and to approve a budget adjustment. Number four, bid number 14-25 Lewis Ford Sales Incorporated, resolution to award bid number 14-25 to Lewis Ford Sales Incorporated of Fayetteville, Arkansas for the purchase of a Ford F-150 pickup truck with maximum lift gate in the amount of $25,652.40 for use by the Recycling and Trash Collection Division and to approve a budget adjustment. Number five, bid number 14-26 Lewis Ford Sales Incorporated, resolution to award bid number 14-26 to Lewis Ford Sales Incorporated of Fayetteville, Arkansas for the purchase of a Ford F-350 pickup truck with reading utility body in the amount of $41,707 for the use by the Water and Sewer Operations Division. Number six, bid number 14-27 Equipment Resource Management Incorporated, resolution to award bid number 14-27 to Equipment Resource Management Incorporated of Little Rock, Arkansas for the purchase of a Fortune milling machine W-200I in the amount of $589,690 with a trading allowance of $250,000 for a total cost to the city of $339,690 for use by the Transportation Division and to approve a budget adjustment. Number seven, bid number 14-21 Suncoast Infrastructure Incorporated, a resolution to award bid number 14-21 to authorize a contract with Suncoast Infrastructure Incorporated in the amount of $76,995 to construct Phase Two of the Elkins Outfall Gravity Sewer Improvements, to approve a $10,000 project contingency and to approve a budget adjustment. And number eight, State of Arkansas Department of Information Systems, a resolution to authorize the mayor to sign a master service agreement with the State of Arkansas Department of Information Systems in the amount of $52,000 for database administration services for the remainder of 2014, to approve a project contingency in the amount of $8,000 and to approve a budget adjustment.
Will we accept the consent agenda as read?
Second.
We have a motion and second to accept the consent agenda as read. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Tannett.
Yes.
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Another unfinished business, we have none. Number one, we have public hearing. Number one, Stroud Investment Properties LLC, a resolution to order the raising and removal of a dilapidated and unsafe structure owned by Stroud Investment Properties LLC located at 540 North Petito Drive in the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas and to approve a budget adjustment. What do we have on that?
Mayor, as indicated at the agenda session, this property has since been demolished, raised, and removed. The site has been cleaned up, and there were some pictures in your packet to show that. So we are recommending this item be tabled indefinitely.
Do I need to open it up for a public hearing?
Not if we're going to table it.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and second to table the Stroud Investment Properties item. Any discussion on that? Sandra, would you please call the row?
Tannett.
Yes.
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Okay, another new business. Number one, Stephen and Bonnie G. Turner Settlement, a resolution pursuant to the Federal Code of Order, Section 39.10(c)(4) to authorize the mayor to pay $25,552.15 to Stephen and Bonnie G. Turner for a wastewater damage claim arising at 1532 North Hillcrest Avenue and to approve a budget adjustment. Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This claim is from a sewer overflow that happened in the early part of April. Typically, the unusual part of this situation is normally when the city rolls in on an overflow, we call in the cleanup mitigator. In this case, the resident already called their own, someone who the city was familiar with. Normally, it's a direct pay to the mitigator, but in this case, we are reimbursing for both the cleanup and the construction costs. So typically, when you see at this claim, it's twice as much as what we usually see because it's a reimbursement for the cleanup, and then it's also paying for the construction of the damaged basement.
Okay, what questions do we have for Tim on this? Okay, any public comment on this? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council.
I move, we go to the, we need the next reading or?
Well, we're ready for a motion and second to pass a resolution.
I move we set, the motion and second to resolution to pass.
Second.
A motion and second to pass the resolution. Any final comments on that? All right. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Tannett.
Yes.
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Okay, number two, Vacation 14-4623, 229 North School Street Parking Deck Ordinance, approving Vacation 14-4623 submitted by the City of Fayetteville property located at 2229 North School Avenue to vacate a five-foot utility easement and a 10-foot right-of-way easement kit.
Whereas the city council has the authority under ACA 1454-104 to vacate public grounds or portions thereof which are not required for corporate purposes, and whereas the city council has determined the following described portion of the platted utility and right-of-way easements are not required for corporate purposes, now therefore, it ordained by the city council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1. That the city council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby vacates and abandons the following described utility and right-of-way easements, as shown in Exhibit B attached or to make part hereof in Section 2, that a copy of this ordinance duly certified by the city clerk, along with a map attached and labeled Exhibit A, shall be filed in the office of the county and recorded in the deed records of the county, Section 3. This vacation approval is subject to the following conditions of approval and shall not be in effect until the conditions are met. Number one, existing utility lines along School Avenue shall be relocated underground subject to final route approval by Cox Communications and AEP. Number two, at least two four-inch conduits shall be installed on the west side of School Avenue between the parking deck and the Walton Art Center building. Number three, the north 28.02 feet of the utility easement and right-of-way easement shall be retained, or the City of Fayetteville shall dedicate a new utility easement as required by AEP. The northern 28.2 feet shall be vacated as well if a new easement is dedicated by the city. Any damage or relocation of existing facilities shall be at the owner or developer's expense.
Jeremy.
Mayor and council, this is part of our parking deck site. There were two easements that needed to be vacated as part of that construction project. One is actually a utility easement, the other is an older right-of-way that was dedicated many years ago. Right-of-way is not needed, it's in excess of our master street plan, and that right-of-way is not needed for the project. The utility easement is part of an existing utility that's being relocated underground. We're putting some of the overhead power lines underground along that School Avenue side, and so this is a request to vacate those easements in accordance with the planning commission's approval of a large-scale development. The planning commission did review this as well, seven to zero. As I mentioned at the agenda session, the city must follow the same rules and regulations, so we notified all utility companies, received their notifications back, and conditions of approval are in the ordinance as indicated by Mr. Williams.
Okay, what questions do we have for Jeremy on this? Anything? All right. Do we have any public comment on this? Okay.
Will we suspend the rules and go to the second reading? Second.
We have a motion and a second to go to the second reading. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Tannett.
Yes.
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
An ordinance approving the VAC 14-4623 submitted by the City of Fayetteville for property located at 2229 North School Avenue to vacate a five-foot utility easement and a 10-foot right-of-way easement.
Any final, I'm sorry, yes, Adele?
I was going to say, I move we go to the third and final reading.
Well, we just did.
Oh, we already did. Okay.
We're going so fast.
No, I don't have any further comments.
Does anybody have any comments? All right. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Tannett.
Yes.
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Okay, number three, amend Chapter 50 Garbage and Trash, an ordinance to change the name of, change the name of Chapter 50 Garbage and Trash to Recycling and Trash Collection to change all references to solid waste recycling division within Chapter 50 to Recycling and Trash Collection Division, to change operations director to recycling and trash collection manager throughout Chapter 50, and to amend 50.05 depositing on streets, alleys, or sidewalks of the Federal Code.
Whereas the solid waste recycling division has been renamed to Recycling and Trash Collection Division, and the operations director no longer heads this division, and whereas a grammatical error exists in Section 55.05 which uses without approval when the clear intent of the law should be with approval, now therefore, it being ordained by the city council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1. Now the city council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby changes the name of Chapter 50 Garbage and Trash to Recycling and Trash Collection. Section 2, that the city council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amends Chapter 50 of the Fayetteville Code by changing all references to solid waste and recycling division therein to recycling and trash collection. Section 3, that the city council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amends Chapter 50 by changing all references to operations director to recycling and trash collection manager. Section 4, that the city council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amends Section 50.05 to change without to with and enacts a new Section 50.05 as shown below, Section 50.05 depositing on streets, alleys, or sidewalks. It shall be unlawful for any person to throw, place, dump, litter, or otherwise deposit any garbage, trash, or refuse upon any public street, alley, or sidewalk of this city except in receptacles placed upon such streets, alleys, or sidewalks with the approval of the City Recycling and Trash Collection Division.
Right.
Mayor, council, I'm here to answer any questions. I think it was pretty self-explanatory in that discussion there, so any questions you have, I'll be happy to entertain.
Any questions from the council on this? Okay. Any public comment on this? Okay.
Will we go to the second reading? Second.
We have a motion and second to go to the second reading. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Tannett.
Yes.
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
An ordinance to change the name of Chapter 50 Garbage and Trash to Recycling and Trash Collection, to change all references to solid waste and recycling division within Chapter 50 to Recycling and Trash Collection Division, to change, quote, "operations director" to "recycling and trash collection manager" throughout Chapter 50, and to amend Section 50.05 depositing on streets, alleys, or sidewalks of the Fayetteville Code.
Okay.
Motion to suspend the rules and move to third and final reading.
Second.
We have a motion and second to go to the third and final reading. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Tannett.
Yes.
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
An ordinance to change the name of Chapter 50 Garbage and Trash to Recycling and Trash Collection, to change all references to solid waste and recycling division within Chapter 50 to Recycling and Trash Collection Division, to change operations director to recycling and trash collections manager throughout Chapter 50, and to amend Section 50.05 depositing on streets, alleys, or sidewalks of the Fayetteville Code.
Is there any final comments from the council on this?
I have just a comment.
Sure.
I think since our government class is here tonight, I think it's really important for you all to think about what happened here. For one thing, the words like manager and director and supervisor, all those words that are in there matter to some people and not to others, but the city is determining through this, making a decision on even something like that. And then you need to think about what matters when you read a sentence and the word is without instead of with. And so, one of our alderpeople caught that, but it was sort of a funny, and our attorney writes a comical mistake in his notes. So I think it's really important when you come to a city council meeting like this, and we're doing this kind of quickly tonight, and I want you all to get it on something like this, that this one was kind of fun because we're cleaning something up and making it better and making it correct, and then we're looking at titles, and we're looking at even the word garbage and waste and recycling. And if you went back and looked at the agenda session meeting that we had last Tuesday night, you would hear Alderman Marsh talk about the word garbage and waste, and she might want to talk about it here tonight. So I don't want to linger on, but you came here to learn something, and I think this one was a fun one for you to get to hear a little bit about, and I hope when you go out and become lawyers and English teachers and whatever you become, that you always remember the importance of just what one word can do when you're looking at it in a sentence, one word, okay?
Okay.
Well, if you'd like to talk about the difference between waste and trash, I think, you know, it's just a word, but it implies, when you call something trash, it implies that it has no value. But waste implies that it's something that has value, but that is just being wasted, and it's the act of not optimizing the use of it that is creating the need for it to go in the, in our case, usually the landfill or to be recycled. And I think there's this, there's long been this idea that you throw trash away. Well, where is away? Away goes through our solid waste or what was formerly our recycling and solid waste division, and so we're just trying to use language to help people understand that, you know, part of the role of government is not, you know, it's to create that place that's away. When you throw something away, one of our city workers is the person who goes and actually collects that, and it's weighed, and it's either taken to a recycling center and reused again or converted into something that can be reused, or it's taken to a landfill and there it will sit in perpetuity. So, language matters, and we're just trying to clean these things up and have more of a connection between the things that we do every day and take for granted, and then the actual things that government does and has to clean up.
Okay. All right. Any other comments from the council on this? All right. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Tannett.
Yes.
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Okay, number four, amend 174.08 prohibited signs, an ordinance to amend 174.08 prohibited signs, portable swinger or temporary attraction sign boards to allow more free-standing A-frame sandwich menu board, may be permitted on a commercially zoned lot or on the adjacent public or private sidewalk in front of the respective business for the duration of the business's hours of operation. The temporary signs shall be removed and placed inside after business hours. Number three, the permitted signs shall only advertise for the adjacent establishment. The sign may not be utilized for product placement or to advertise for other commercial or business establishments. This was brought to me by Alderman Petty, who had received requests, and it actually is a slight amendment to an ordinance, I think, that Alderman Rhodes once presented to the city council to, for the restaurant, so they would be able to have an A-frame little sandwich board in front of the restaurant to kind of advertise what their special was that day or something. And that was passed by the city council, and I think Alderman Petty was requested by one of the retail establishments, not a restaurant, to see if they could have the same sort of sandwich board. And so I drafted this up, and I think that he also spoke with Jeremy Pate, who is over the sign ordinance to some extent, so I think that he looked at that, and any comments that you might have, Jeremy, on that?
I think we're supportive. We generally try to stay content neutral in our sign ordinance, and I think this would strengthen that in that regard, not make it for one specific business, and so we were supportive of that, this particular section. We do see sometimes retail establishments utilize these same sandwich boards. Normally, it's in properties that don't have the property to have their own free-standing sign, so it's primarily downtown where the building's right up next to the sidewalk, and really, all they have is the building sign, so this allows for someone to advertise their business. There are some safeguards that were in the original ordinance that remain, such as ADA compliance, maintaining five, minimum of five feet of sidewalk, only advertising for the business adjacent to it, so you won't see off-site signs across the square or somewhere down Dixon Street for a business that's somewhere else. We feel those safeguards are still there and are supportive.
Okay. Good. What comments, questions do we have in the council? Anything? Okay. Any public comment on this? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Just may.
I just want to emphasize here the importance of our sidewalks remaining ADA compliance, and this does require that, but, you know, I've seen a lot of signs blocking the sidewalks, so I just would like to emphasize for businesses to make sure that you have at least five feet of clear sidewalk left after you place these signs, and that you can accommodate anyone who is mobility challenged. So, I think that was a really important protection, and I'm glad to see it's in here.
Anything else? Okay.
Motion to suspend the rules and move to second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go to the second reading. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Tannett.
Yes.
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
An ordinance to amend Section 174.08 prohibited signs, subsection C, portable swinger or temporary attraction sign boards, to allow more free-standing A-frame, A-frame sandwich menu board sign, sign board, excuse me. And I wrote this, so you should be able to read the title.
Okay.
Mayor, there's not anything that says this is strictly for restaurants?
No, it used to be for restaurants, and now it is for any retail commercial establishment. If the sidewalk in front of their business is big enough so that they can put the A-frame out and still have it ADA compatible. Not every sidewalk around town would certainly have that.
Thank you.
Actually, this is a question, actually. When this was first put together, if we're trying to be neutral in our signs to let anybody do this, why didn't we do it in the first place?
I think it was viewed as a new change to the sign ordinance. We don't want to have too many exceptions to the sign ordinance. Consistency is something that's good to have, and so we didn't allow this sort of thing before. It was felt like there was some special case needs here for restaurants to be able to actually advertise what was going on that day, their special or something like that, and so I think that is why the city council at that point felt like it was appropriate for the restaurants, but they wanted to limit it as much as possible. And I think this is something we need to look at in the future. You know, it might be that this is something that will open the doors too wide and present kind of clutter or, and hurt some of, one of the bases of our sign ordinance is aesthetics. And so if this would damage that too much, then that's certainly something you could look again at. I think what has happened is that there are a few sandwich board signs around, A-frame boards around downtown anyway, and I think that there has not been any concern or opposition of them, and that's another reason, I think, maybe Alderman Petty felt like it would not be a problem.
I'm in full support of it, I just, I was just trying to get a little history of it, so thank you very much for that. I appreciate it.
I was on, on that council case exactly right, because we were, that was, we were kind of stepping into new territory there.
Yeah.
We didn't know how far to take it, so we struck a happy medium. It took us a couple of council meetings to do that, if I remember correctly.
Right. Well, also, when we have a very cluttered area for a festival or downtown for Farmer's Market or First Thursday, this gives the opportunity for someone to, to the sandwich sign out so that people realize the merchants are there also, and I think that, that is important where we have a high pedestrian area.
Yeah, makes sense. That's a good point.
I'll just add to that, that I think this is great, especially in the pedestrian and cycling areas where, you know, when you're approaching a business at, parallel to it from the perspective of a pedestrian, you don't see the big sign that's on the building because it's faced the wrong way, so I think it's a great way to reach out and engage pedestrians on the street. I fully support this ordinance.
Wait one second. We need a motion and a second to go to the third.
Move to go to the third and final reading. Oh, sorry.
I just, one more question. Jeremy, the part of the ordinance that says they can't take a sandwich board offside or it has to be adjacent to the business they're in, who enforces that if they did? I mean, do you, does your office do that? So people would just report an extra sandwich board is somewhere where it shouldn't, because maybe a business wouldn't dig down and realize that and accidentally do that, so if you saw one, your office wouldn't call or if?
Yes, and we've had to enforce that part of the ordinance already in the last few years, and also, actually, one of the reasons that Mr. Petty brought this forward, we've had to enforce the part that it's only for restaurants currently, so other retail establishments in the downtown area would have to tell, you can't have that sandwich board on the sidewalk because you're not a restaurant, and that was really the sole criteria for that.
But this just falls under code compliant, like the same process of a code compliant that someone would complain about.
It would, but ultimately, it's our office, planning office that's over the, over the sign ordinance. I will make another point as well, is that these signs have to be removed after business hours, and so that's the nice thing about them, they're very, they're temporary in nature, so they're out during business and they come in at night.
Thank you very much.
I'll second Justin's motion.
We have a motion and a second to go to the third and final reading. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Tannett.
Yes.
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
An ordinance to amend Section 174.08 prohibited signs, subsection C, portable swinger or temporary attraction sign boards, to allow more free-standing A-frame sandwich menu sign boards.
Jeremy, the part of the ordinance that says they can't take a sandwich board offside or it has to be adjacent to the business, then, who enforces that if they did? I mean, does your office do that? So people would just report an extra sandwich board is somewhere where it shouldn't, because maybe a business wouldn't dig down and realize that and accidentally do that, so if you saw one, your office would call or if?
Yes, and we've had to enforce that part of the ordinance already in the last few years, and also, actually, one of the reasons that Mr. Petty brought this forward, we've had to enforce the part that it's only for restaurants currently, so other retail establishments in the downtown area, we've had to tell you can't have that sandwich board on the sidewalk because you're not a restaurant, and that was really the sole criteria for that.
But this just falls under code compliant, like the same process of a code compliant that someone would complain?
It would, but ultimately, it's our office, planning office that's over the, over the sign ordinance. I will make another point as well, is that these signs have to be removed after business hours, and so that's the nice thing about them, they're very, they're temporary in nature, so they're out during business and they come in at night.
Thank you very much.
I'll second Justin's motion.
We have a motion and a second to go to the third and final reading. Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Tenet?
Yes.
Schottmeyer?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
An ordinance to amend section one seventy-four oh eight prohibited signs subsection C portable swinger or temporary attraction sign boards to allow more freestanding A-frame, A-frame sandwich menu board, sign, sign board, excuse me. I wrote this, so you should be able to read the title.
Okay.
Mayor, there's not anything that says this is strictly for restaurants?
No, it used to be for restaurants, and now it is for any retail commercial establishment. If the sidewalk in front of their business is big enough so that they can put the A-frame out and still have it ADA compatible. Not every sidewalk around town would certainly have that.
Thank you.
Actually, this is a question, actually. When this was first put together, if we're, if we're trying to be neutral in our signs to let anybody do this, why didn't we do it in the first place?